Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are here in June 19, 2018. It is 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Ben Hibner with the Acton United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. All rise, please.
Would you pray with me? Holy Gracious God, we give you thanks to this day and we give you thanks that we have gathered in this place to do the work of this city. God, as we gather together, we pray that you would pour out your blessings upon this city and that you'd pour out your blessings upon those that have been sent to run it. God, we pray that as they would meet tonight and as they would consider where we're going, God, that they would just be filled with knowledge of you, that, God, they would seek your will first. God, we pray that this entire city would seek your will first. God, we pray for your forgiveness when we fail to do that, when we fail to see where you are at work in our lives. God, we thank you for everything that you've given us and we thank you that we live in a country that allows us so many freedoms. God, help us to use those freedoms to glorify your name. We pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. One quick announcement. Our councilperson, Trisha Reiner, will not be with us today. We want to reach out and have prayer for her. She's had some medical issues, but she's recovering, but we want to pray for her quick recovery and get her back up here at the diocese as soon as possible. This time, we have a few presentations that I'd like to present. Our first presentation is going to be a presentation to the Leadership Granbury. I don't know how many folks have been involved with Leadership Granbury, but we had a graduating class there here recently, and we had one of our own is actually in the graduating class. Do we have some representatives from the Leadership Granbury? Come on up. Get some photographs, man. How they say it? Come on down? Wow. Now I know what the crowd's up here for. Yeah. Uh-uh.
Man, one guy in the whole class.
You got... Somebody made a statement, "One guy." He had his hands full. Yeah, it's more... Okay, okay. Actually, I attended one of their little events they had and played a little music for them, and they're a lively group. They really are, so... This is the graduating group for the recent Granbury, Leadership Granbury. And, you know, Granbury's full of leaders in many businesses, professional groups, agencies, and institutions in this area, but there are some leaders that go beyond and they invest into both Granbury and themselves. The graduates of the Leadership Granbury are those leaders that are working to make their mark on Granbury. Leadership Granbury is an organization and program that promotes learning and leadership as a way to strengthen our community. The program creates an awareness of community resources and needs and enhances the leadership skills and helps identify future leaders. Right here, future leaders. These graduates of Leadership Granbury, they met for eight months, and in that time, they learned about everything from local government to small business to nonprofit organizations, and you go into up in the tower too, right? The courthouse, that was exciting. The Granbury community benefits from the examples of great leaders. We appreciate the hard work and the dedication of making a better Granbury, and we look forward to seeing the future impact that you all will have as you continue to invest in our community. So, class leaders Amanda McGinnis and Angela Grundy will now introduce... You didn't know that, did you? You will now introduce the 2017/18 Leadership Granbury graduates. So, go ahead and introduce these folks, if you would, please. You want to use the mic? You can.
Um, will we... Can you hear? Pull it down. All right. This is new. This is Betty Moss and Julie Boyd, young Julie Woodridge, and Charlotte, I'm going to mess up her name, Kurgendal. This is our president, Katie Orfit, that came, and then Paige Hopkins, Kevin Watson, his wife Kara Watkins, um, now help me out, because I'm... Rhonda Rogers, Mary Mullen, Barbara Townsend, Denise Huber, Jackie Gordon, Kickston Jackson, and then Julia Parnell, and Beth Sharon are also on our board with us, so...
Thank you, thank you very much. This may not be the order they are on the deal, but I'm gonna... We'll get to all of them as we go. I'm gonna call upon Michael Ross, our Assistant City Manager, to come up here. Michael Ross. Michael has achieved an award that we'd like to recognize tonight also. If nobody knows Michael, he is our Assistant City Manager, and I like to tell people we've got two of the best city managers in Granbury because Michael serves on a board with the TML City Managers, right? And then Chris serves, and he's actually getting ready to be the President of the Texas Association of City Managers, right? But in order to do that, you have to get a lot of certificates in, and you got to get around, you got to know a lot of people, and so, you know, we're fortunate to have these two folks right here in Granbury because they are well thought of in the city manager arena, so... But Texas State University William P. Hobby Center for Public Service graduated 62 new Texas-certified public managers at the State Capitol on Monday, June 8, 2018. The Certified Public Manager Program is a nationally recognized program for training and developing public managers and supervisors. The primary goals are for professionalized public management and improve organizational efficiencies and effectiveness. Courses of study cover human resources, quality management, communication, finance program evaluation, and information systems. The CPM graduates and their families came from CPM programs at the following locations. They came from Arlington, Houston, Edinburgh, Nacogdoches, Round Rock, San Marcos, Texas, and our own Assistant City Manager, Michael Ross, from right here in Granbury. He was one of 20 who graduated from the Texas State University of Arlington. We congratulate Michael on his hard work over the course of the CPM program and his dedication to continue training and educate in his field. So, congratulations, Michael.
How long was it supposed to be?
Easy. And he did get a really nice certificate. He didn't bring it up here with him, but it was a really nice certificate, wanted to hang in his office there, but we're proud of Michael for that. Our next award goes to our financial department, and I'm gonna tell you what, I spent a whole day with the financial department today, and they did a great job. As you know, we went through our budget today. We started at 8 o'clock this morning, and it ended up about 4 o'clock, I believe it was, but I have to tell you, our financial department put together what I call, again, an award-winning financial report, and it was real easy for the council to follow, it was real easy for the council to understand, and so, they laid out, and they also laid out a video that was created by our own Bethany over here, and I plan on using that at some other events and stuff whenever I'm asked to speak and let people know what's going on in the city. But it was a great presentation, so it's not a surprise to me that our financial department gets these kind of awards. So, if we got some financial people, come on down. Yes, sir? Many, many times. I think it's on here. Well, if it's not on here, I'll have Ava let you know, but the wall's full of plaques, but that's a good thing, so... The City of Granbury has received the Government Financial Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget for the 2017/18 fiscal year. Award recipients have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and provide an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. The City of Granbury is one of over, and listen to this, one of over 1,600 participants in the program. So, it's not just like we're participating with 10 or 20 different people. This is 1,600 that, participants in this program. For the city to receive the budget award, it had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, and an outrageous guide and a communications device... operation guide, I'm sorry. This award was not only presented to the city, but also to recognize the individuals who were primarily responsible for this achievement. Those individuals are City Manager Chris Kaufman, he chose not to stand up here, I guess, Director of Finance Ava Gregory, and Assistant Financial Director Elizabeth Bailey. So, you have Elizabeth Bailey and Ava Gregory right here, and like I said, they spent the whole day showing off their talents there, but I have to say, it was a great report, and I can see why we would receive an award like this. So, congratulations. We're gonna have Chris move and Michael come up here now? No.
We need to clap again.
No, 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 no. Michael said when he come to Granbury, that's what he wanted to do, so we're gonna let him do that. We are going to move into our consent agenda tonight. Those items on the consent agenda, number one is to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of June 5, 2018 regular meeting. The second item is to consider approving a poll attachment agreement between Zale Group LLC and the City of Granbury. Number three is to review and approve of Babe's Granbury LLC, the Landlord Subordination Consent Agreement, and number four is to consider approving Resolution Number 18-12, requesting financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for water systems improvements and authorizing the filling of an application for financial assistance. Number five is to consider approving Resolution Number 18-13, requesting financial assistance from Texas Water Development Board for sewer system improvements. Number six, consider approving Resolution Number 18-14, suspending Atmos Energy Corporation's proposed effective date, and number seven, consider adopting Resolution Number 18-15, authorizing the use of Chapter 2269 of the Government Code, Competitive Sealed Proposal Method for Contracting of an Electoral Relocation of the Distribution Line for the City of Granbury and United Co-op. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items, I hope, and if you've had time to look those over, are there any of those items that you wish to modify or to pull off the agenda at this time and discuss further? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda.
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. The first item on the deliberation agenda is to accept and discuss a report from the 2018 Charter Review Commission. I will say they've been working real hard on this charter review. It's been past due of reviewing this and coming up with one. They've done a great job with it. And Chris, we're gonna call upon Larry Gilli, is that true? Hello, Chris. We're gonna get Larry Gilli, is that true?
Larry Gilli, Chairman of the Committee.
Larry Gilli's gonna talk and give us a presentation, council.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to make this presentation, and thank you for allowing us to serve the City of Granbury as members of the Charter Review Commission. And I also want to thank the tremendous support we had from the city staff in this process. Chris Kaufman was wonderful, Jeremy Sorrell, Mickey Matlock did a tremendous job in providing support. I will tell you that they were very respectful of the process. They allowed the commission to do its work. They didn't insert themselves into the process in any way to direct or influence the outcome, but they were tremendous support. And of course, Charles Zech, you're outside council, who is absolutely one of the premier experts on city charters in Texas. We were really pleased to have him as a part of this process. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners. Couple of them are here tonight, actually, to answer any questions if you have them. We'll all try to work together to respond the best we can, but those individuals include Mark Gresham, who served as Vice Chair, Stephen Cooben, who's here tonight, Jim Marshall's also here tonight, John Grace, Donald McBride, and Bruce Watley. So, those represented the Charter Review Commissioners that you all appointed, and I have to say, and Mayor, you made the comment earlier about the commission working hard, and they really did. We had excellent attendance at all of our meetings. We had spirited discussion and debate. Most of the votes were unanimous, but not all, and so, we had a really good discussion about the direction that we felt like the city charter should go at this point. So, as you look, I think you've all got copies of the work of the commission, and as you look through that, I think what you will see is much of the work of the commission has done is really just to do some overall housekeeping of the city charter. Some of the things that you'll see in the charter include changes that reflect the current state statutes. Perhaps the city charter didn't necessarily comport with the state statutes because of changes that have been made, or they may be in conflict with the state statutes or the Constitution. And so, we felt like we needed to bring those changes to you and recommend some changes in the charter with regard to those issues. A lot of what we did was to streamline, proposed to streamline the charter. You'll see a lot of things were removed that just simply aren't necessary. It may be redundant language or unnecessary or confusing language. For example, provisions that are already in state statutes don't necessarily need to be in the charter as well. So, those are much of what we recommended to you throughout this process. There are a few substantive changes that we are recommending you consider placing on the ballot for the citizens of Granbury to consider as far as amending the current city charter. And I just want to mention a couple of those to you because they take the governance of Granbury in a little bit different direction than you've had in the past. The first of those being that the commission recommends that you have a proposition that would allow the mayor to be a voting member of the city council. As we talked a lot about that, and as we discussed that, we felt like that the mayor being elected by the citizens of this community could best serve his or her constituents by being a voting member of the city council. And so, as we talked about that, we discussed, well, if that were the case, then you're gonna have an even number of voting members of the city council. And so, do we recommend you add another member of the council? We didn't feel like that was really our place to take on that issue at this time. And so, the more we talked about it, the more we realized that if the mayor is a voting member of the council, then most actions of the council would require a four-vote majority for actions to be approved. If you added a seventh member to the city council, a majority of that city council would be four members. So, we just felt like that part of the discussion was something that the city council needed to deliberate and decide, but we do recommend, because of the reasons that I just stated, that we felt like it made sense that the mayor be a voting member of the city council. Another thing that we recommended in a couple of areas of the charter is to add some duties and responsibilities to the office of city manager. Specifically, we recommend that the city secretary be appointed by the city manager rather than the city council. The discussion around that issue was really one of administrative efficiency. We felt like that, in part, the appointment of the city secretary by council really is a bit of a holdover from the days when the city was a general law city, city of smaller size, 5,000 population or less. And now, you've got your own city charter, you've got really a much more sophisticated governance in this community. It's a larger community, one that requires daily administrative oversight of the city manager and his staff. And so, we felt like from an efficiency standpoint, it just made sense that that appointment would be made by, and that the city secretary's office would be overseen by the city manager. We also recommend that the city manager sign all contracts for the city. This is another one of those efficiency issues. The city manager's job, his role or her role on a daily basis is to be here, running the affairs of the city, doing the administrative work of the city council. And so, I really want to stress that in no way does this remove any authority of the city council to approve contracts. The approval process that you have in place won't change. This is an administrative function. It's just allow the city manager the authority to sign contracts that have been approved by this governing body, and it allows the day-to-day business management of the city to take place, we believe, in a more efficient manner. And then, one last thing I want to highlight, this is, we hope, a provision of the charter if it is ultimately added as a proposition and approved by the citizens of this community, one that never has to be used, but that is a provision for government reformation. That's in case some catastrophic event occurs, and either through death or injury or whatever the case might be, you don't have enough members of this governing body to constitute a quorum of the city council. And we think that that likelihood is slim, but it has occurred, not in Granbury, but in this country, it has occurred, and so, we felt like that it made sense that there be a provision in your charter to be able to reconstitute a city council quickly. And so, without going into a lot of detail, you can read how that happens. It allows for the surviving, any surviving members of the council and senior staff and county commissioners' court to appoint members from the citizenry to the city council until a special election can be held to fill those vacancies. But it just makes sure that in the event of some tragic crisis, that the Granbury City Government can continue to function. And so, those are the highlights that we would bring to your attention tonight. As you know, after having reviewed the recommendation of the commission, that there are a lot of other issues in there, but as I said, most of them are housekeeping items, but I would be happy to try to answer any questions you might have, and as I said, I have two of my fellow commissioners here tonight, as well as Mr. Zech, that can probably answer questions that I'm not able to. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Larry, and that's exactly what, we're gonna roll this out now and open it up to the council to ask questions, because as the, as this agenda item reads, it's gonna be to accept and discuss this report that has been given by the commission, and if it looks to where it gets to the point where we want the commission to look at it again, or if we want to even look at it at a different way, then we can surely entertain that also. But tonight, we'll have the opportunity to ask what commissions are here to answer some of the questions. So, I'm gonna open it up to questions with the council at this time. Looking good so far, Larry.
Sure is.
Councilman Mobley.
I'll tell you, and I mentioned this to Mr. Zech earlier, the most attractive part of our packet today was all, were all the paragraphs that had lines going through them on the previous charter, which tells me that it was a lot of redundancy, and it's nice to see that cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
Just got a couple on two of the measures. One is Measure 4, and that's the hiring or the appointment of the city secretary.
Yes, sir.
In my understanding, in my brief tenure up here, is that as a council, we're to have very, we have very little directives other than through the city manager. Now, the nice part is, we have a city secretary. We can ask her to help us with things and prepare things. How will that change in your mind? Because if, this is, this seems to be a situation that doesn't seem to be broken right now because, in effect, she works with and for us.
Right.
And we have a direct, we do her reviews and those type of things. I don't know that I could fill out a review for anybody else in the city, but with Carl, I can because we have so much interaction.
Sure.
So, how is this perceived as a problem as it stands?
And, Councilman, it was not perceived as a problem, first of all.
Oh, good.
Let me just back it up. Well, that's your prerogative as a council, absolutely. But again, as I said earlier, we felt like as a Charter Review Commission, that it afforded an opportunity for improving the efficiency of the city government. Now, you point out a valid point, that the city secretary does provide a vital service to the council. City secretary does a lot of things for you besides take minutes at your meetings, and I'm aware of that. I would assume that that would not change, while the direct supervision of the day-to-day functions of that individual would be under the direction of the city manager. My assumption would be, and I would have to allow Chris to speak to this, is that the city manager wouldn't change any of those functions in terms of assistance to the city council. That would probably function just exactly as it does now. So, your point being, obviously, that if it's not broken, it doesn't need fixing, and that's a call that you all will ultimately have to make. From our perspective, it just seemed to be more efficient. And I'll give you some examples. First of all, I would assume all employees of the City of Granbury, including those council appointees, would, are expected to fall under the direction and oversight of the city's personnel policies. Well, the city manager is responsible, perhaps to the Director of Human Resources, but ultimately has the responsibility for management and oversight and implementation and enforcement of all personnel policies. I just think it may be more efficient for things like that to fall under the responsibility of the city manager than for the city council to have to deal with, well, it could be anything from a minor issue under the personnel policies to a significant one, but...
Don't the same policies apply to the city secretary as it does to the other employees?
Sure. And really, that's my point, is that, that because the city manager currently has oversight of all the other employees in the organization in terms of management through the human resources, through the human personnel policies, it just seemed to make sense to us that the city manager would also provide that oversight to the city secretary's office.
Well, from where we sit, I mean, it's nice, it's nice to have at least one person in this building that has to pretend to like us.
Right.
I thought that's what I did.
I thought that's what I did.
It's selfish on my part.
Her views come up tonight.
That's right. So, thanks for answering that. Now, measure 13, when we're talking about the city manager signing contracts.
Right.
Now, effectively, a purchase order is a contract, and I know he signs a lot of those now. Is this, is this saying he can sign every contract that comes before, across his desk, even, I mean, through council, and if it bypasses council?
That is our interpretation, yes, sir. And again, it doesn't mean that the city manager has the sole authority to approve the content of those contracts necessarily. You all, as a city council, have to authorize the execution of contracts, even now, that are signed by the mayor. It's just, again, an efficiency issue, and a lot of times, I'm sure you all are very well aware, sometimes those contracts, when they're approved by the city council, the contractor who is doing the work is anxious to get started, and once that contract's signed and get the job underway, it's an efficiency thing for them as well. And so, we just felt like it made sense, as a matter of day-to-day business, that the city manager would execute those contracts.
Well, I would look at it a little bit different, because I would think if another set of eyes, the mayor's eyes see it, I would say that's checks and balances. While I tell our city manager every week how much I love him, because I do, I respect him, his people respect him, and I think everybody at this diocese does, but I think while that relationship is in place going forward, we can't assure that that is going to be the case. And I would just soon have another set of eyes, in addition to the city manager, because he, the city secretary, are going to prepare these items, but we have the mayor's eyes see them as well. And I think, certainly for the larger contracts, I think that would be my only pullback on this, those two items.
I totally understand, and if I can just comment on that last point that you made, that before a contract comes to the city council for approval, it's more than likely had a number of sets of eyes on it, including the city attorney, who probably is responsible for drafting much of the content of those contracts. And so, after that contract is approved by a majority vote of the city council, there's probably not going to be any changes, in fact, there probably should not be any changes to that contract prior to its execution by whomever, whether it be the mayor, the city council. And so, my hope would be, as a citizen of this community, that there's been a number of sets of eyes on that contract before, not only it's executed, but before it's approved by the city council, so...
So, by the time it gets to that point, it's just a matter of signing it, so as far as efficiency goes, really, all the hard work's been, heavy lifting's been done prior to that, then it's just a matter of getting ink on paper.
Yes, sir. That's really all it is, is just the physical signature. But I will say this, and I can't speak, because I don't know how the city of Granbury's administrative function works, but I would assume that there's also a pretty extensive tracking process for when contracts are executed, when, you know, what are their, what are key dates in terms of when various elements of the contract are expected to be completed. And so, again, it's in large part, after the contract's been approved by the council, in large part, it's just an administrative function, including, in my opinion, the signature. But again, we're making a recommendation to you tonight, it's ultimately up to the city council to decide what propositions you want to include on the ballot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I will tell you that I've talked to several people that have been working with you over the last six months, and every person, including Mark Gresham, every person has given extremely positive feedback to the fact that you have a lot of, lot of different backgrounds.
Right.
Coming into one room with a lot of what could be considered strong personalities, but everybody has to justify their point. And as a council, I think that's healthy, productive, and efficient. So, I appreciate the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I've got a...
Councilman Allen.
I was going to say thank you and your people that work with you. Appreciate y'all's volunteer to do that. I'm like Mr. Mobley a little bit on the secretary, because if she comes under our city manager, we cannot talk to her. Everything's got to go through our city manager. We can't talk to the department head, we've got to go through Chris. So, I'd have a big problem with that one, because I feel like, we've been working together for seven or eight years now.
Three years.
Huh?
Three years.
I'm talking about her.
Oh.
Well...
It just seems like seven.
Yeah, it seemed like twelve with you, Chris, I'm sorry. No, no disrespect to you, but the way I feel about it is, you know, we worked under D for years, and then we got Carla, and she's been so nice to us this week, it's unbelievable. But honestly, I think it, I'd have a problem with that one. And no disrespect to you, Chris, on that.
This is y'all's deal.
Okay.
Don't worry about me at all.
We've been in this budget meeting all day, I think, I told my wife ago, I said, I think Chris hates me. But anyway, right now, it takes four votes, anyway. I think the mayor's doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
I know that he talks a lot with our attorney on what's going on in the meeting, and I just think that if it came down to a three-three tie, what do we do, draw straws?
The matter would fail, Councilman.
Could have had four.
The matter would fail, the proposition would fail.
Yeah, and I don't think it may be fairer to some people that's come up before us, and three of us against it, and three for it, and we can't vote on it. You know, we can't, we can't help them or deny it, it just fails. So, I'd have a problem with that. And again, don't want everybody up there getting mad at me yet, but no disrespect, Mayor. The other thing is, is when Mr. Mobley's talking about signing contracts, and I've got to ask the question to the mayor, because I don't know what's answered, but do you sign POs now, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Purchase orders?
No, no, I'm sorry, no.
Okay.
And if you want to go on, and we can talk about, like, right now, I'm presently signing a lot of the contracts for the airport. That's, I'm going to use this as an example. They come to my desk, I look at them, now, here again, that's something that the council has already approved, that we're going to change the fees, and so, we're redoing every one of those contracts. So, every week, I have those in my box.
Yeah.
He knows about them, I know, I look at them, and we've talked about this, because Chris, here we go again, he's a great city manager, but we have to set this charter up for maybe not such a good city manager. If somebody was here that didn't want to do that, or wanted to maybe slide something by the council that was going to get signed just by the city manager, then they could do that.
That'll be after I get off the council.
That'd be after you get off the council, but, and I think that's what Councilman Mobley was alluding to. It's not what's going on right now, but it's what happens if, you know, if we're not here, or even another council, we're setting a charter for, for other people to be using. And as you know, there's, if a city manager feels like, well, I'm, you know, I don't have to go through the council for this, I'll just go ahead and sign it, and nobody knows about it. I don't think that happens now.
No.
I know it doesn't happen now, because I see most of them.
Well, you know, there used to be a gun in Greenspan.
I'm going to get to...
Worked for the government for years, and somebody asked him what, asked the president what was going to happen when he died, and they said they're going to prop him up against the wall, like he's still alive. We'll do Chris that way.
Yeah, good.
We'll just prop him up.
Do a cardboard of him, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. But, you know, as long as the council approves it, then if you're already not signing the others, I don't have a problem with that, if the council's...
And that's what my signature is, it's just a signature that the council, I'm representing the council, I'm not representing just the mayor there, I'm representing the council has okayed these contracts, and I've got my signature on there, so that they know that.
However you feel.
I think Chris has something he wants to say, before you lose a thought, you got something he wanted to add?
Yeah, the, this whole thing is, there's laws in place that protect y'all from your concerns. So, the only legitimate contract that can be executed has to be appropriated by this council financially and approved. You approve that through your annual budget, and then as special contracts, anything over $50,000, because the current law requires that to be ran through the council, whether it's in the budget or not. So, we, that's the way we do things. Now, here's the rub, is we have a purchase order system, and most cities do have purchase order systems. But what happens is, is we have various staff at different levels of expenditure approve those purchase orders. Well, technically, a purchase order is a binding agreement, and we're not operating that way. And it would be very inefficient to operate that way, to have the mayor come in and sign every purchase order. We spend $41 million a year through different methods. And so, we have internal checks and balances, our auditors are checking us all the time. I think your concerns about a shady city manager coming in here and doing something wrong are relieved by the internal checks and balances already established by law and by your annual audit. Now then, it's not about me, and it's not about you, it's about, not about now, it's about the future and our community. And that's what the charter review was looking at, was the long-term viability of how this organization continues to grow and remain efficient, so...
Chris, let me ask this, if, I think your limit is $50,000, is that correct? You could spend without council approval?
Well, if it's not in the budget, I can't spend it.
Can't spend anything.
Period.
Yeah. Only for blue bodies.
Yep, it's got to be, it's got to be appropriated by this governing body to be spent.
Okay. So, you don't have a, I guess I'm asking the mayor now, that would relieve you if you didn't have to sign it, is what you're saying?
No. You know, when I came on board, and I want to credit Carla, she, I made the statement to the public that I wouldn't rubber stamp anything. And so, I look at everything. And there has been times, I'm not saying that we miss everything, but there's been times that my set of eyes has caught something on a contract and didn't get signed, but it went back, and then it come back and it got signed. Not very often. So, basically, what we're looking at is just another set of eyes on something, and at this point, with the council and the staff and everybody we have in place right now, does it, does it hold things up? I don't believe so, because I probably spend too much time here and make sure that every contract, as soon as it hits my desk, gets signed so that it can get, so that it can get on its way. Now, here again, we're talking down the road, and like Chris was talking about the future, it's a possibility, if it's waiting on a mayor's signature, it could sit there for a week or two before somebody gets something done with it. So, I see where that's a problem. It could be a...
Let me give you an example of last week, okay? The mayor's out of town, the mayor pro tem's out of town. I've got an engineering agreement that was submitted to me on Monday, or Tuesday of last week, that was vital to be, the work to be complete for this agenda item tonight. So, on day two, I made the call, it's a $3,900 agreement for an engineer to review the Honeywell proposal, which is required by law, which was authorized by the council to move forward with this project to do the feasibility study, and I had to make a decision. Either put it on the agenda for tonight by signing that agreement and authorizing that man to go ahead, it's the same thing as signing a purchase order, but it's not, it's his agreement, so I had to sign it, because there was no one else authorized to sign it. So, I felt very awkward doing that.
Could have called me, I'd come back.
Yeah, I wanted you to enjoy your Kima vacation that you bought.
I was still in Texas.
So, that's an example.
When I get 98 and I'm mayor, I'll be here.
But anyway, everybody, things happen, and so, but we need, we need a system that allows authorization to business to move forward, regardless of who's sitting where.
And that's all, that's all about.
Yeah, continuity of business.
Any more, Mr. Allen?
No, sir, thank you.
Council, any more, council?
Mayor?
Councilman Couch.
Larry, thank you for all your work, and I can tell that everyone went through this with a fine-tooth comb. I want to back up a little bit and get a better understanding, because one of the hallmarks of the charter is the mayor only votes in a tie. And there's a lot of measures here that talk about four votes. And I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this new policy of a four-vote requirement to pass anything is driven by confusion in the, in the charter, right, about what is a majority?
Well, not necessarily. There was some question about a majority based on whether or not the mayor was a member of the city council as defined in the city charter. That was really the only confusion per se in the existing charter. But this new provision that you have with the recommendation for the mayor to vote, and if you'll notice, Mr. Zek provided a chart that shows you which provisions would require three votes for approval, and which would require four, and most of them require four. It just makes it a little clearer. And I would defer to Mr. Zek if he wants to clarify.
He's right there, he's ready to speak.
Listen, Kay, I don't know if we're going to have a successful meeting, but if I need to...
Okay, well, you know, for nearly 30 years, we've functioned as three votes, you know, passes everything.
Right.
And so, this is a fundamental shift.
Yes.
And they seem to be tied together, that if we add the mayor to voting, the majority now is four. So, I appreciate the philosophy that, you know, if the mayor's elected by the people, then he should have a vote. But was there discussion of things being problematic up to this point because he didn't vote?
Not really. I mean, it wasn't so much about problems with city government functioning under its current structure, as much as it was about making the mayor's role on city council more meaningful, if you will. I mean, right now, obviously, if you have a tie vote, the mayor has the opportunity to vote, but besides that, a lot of the mayor's role is to manage the meeting, unless there is a tie vote. Now, that's not to say that the mayor doesn't have influence over the other council members, but the ability of the mayor to exercise that influence is somewhat limited on a practical level by the open government statutes. I mean, you can't, you want to be careful, you don't do things to create a walking quorum, for example, and I know you all are mindful of that, but we just felt like that it allowed the mayor to participate in the governance of the community, and to represent the mayor's constituents more effectively by having the opportunity to vote.
Okay. But if, if we decided that we liked the system, say, from six months ago, and in the last 30 years, where three votes rule.
Right.
We would simply need to clean up the definition of the voting, the regular voting council, wouldn't we?
I think that's right. Go ahead and say it, Charlie.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. Because I've, I've talked to, well, several cities, and when the, when the mayor votes, it's always an odd number council, in order to avoid a tie.
Right.
And so, I guess if I were to consider having the mayor vote, then I would want to see the same thing happen, that at the same time that we adopt the mayor voting, then we need to add a seat, or we need to get rid of a seat.
Right.
But, I love you.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
I can walk you through the discussion they had, just so you have a fuller picture.
Okay, great.
Not advocating for or against, just so that you can have a fuller picture of how their discussion went. Because they can, and if I say something, y'all, that is way off course from what y'all, just shoot me in the back, because that's what happens to me anyway, because I'm a lawyer, and my back's always to everybody at the council meetings. My name is Charlie Zek, I assisted the charter commission through this process. So, they, they had that discussion, they did, they had that discussion, just, so this is all for your edification. There was a discussion about, well, well, if there's an odd, if it's not an odd number of people, there might be a tie. And the answer to that question is, well, that means it doesn't pass. Just as if you have a three, under normal circumstances, if you've got a five-member council, and you've got five people voting, and it's a three-two vote, well, it passes. If it's two and four and three against, it fails. So, if you have a tie vote, it just means it doesn't pass. And then, the discussion was, well, if it's such a controversial issue, that you can't convince a majority of the six that it needs to be adopted, maybe it should fail, so that you can come back to convince one other person to create a compromise, so that we have a legislation that at least four... a legislation that at least four members of the city council agree to. And that was sort of their thought process, is that a tie vote is not a bad thing, and in fact, maybe in certain circumstances, a tie vote is a good thing, because then it forces people to come to a compromise and come to something that at least more than a simple majority of the, although in this case, this would be a simple majority if you round up, if the mayor votes, can agree to. And that was their thought process for that reason. I actually said, you know, I actually said at the beginning, I, you know, I personally don't have a feeling, a problem with a tie vote, but I've never had anybody agree with me that, and then they went ahead and agreed with me. But that was their thought process as to that reason, but again, fully your decision as to whether or not that's something you want, because really, all you're doing is you're saying, should we send this to the voters for them to make a decision on? But you are correct. The majority of folks where, forms of government where the mayor votes, there is an odd number of voters in order to avoid a tie. So, that was their thought process. Am I wrong? Because I, no? Okay.
There was also, there was also the thought as, our city charter already says that the mayor is part of the council and counts towards the quorum, which requires a four-person vote up here.
That's correct.
So, allowing the mayor to vote is one more chance to get a four-person vote.
That's correct. You're right, I forgot about that.
So, that was the last caveat that caused that domino to fall.
Yeah, you're right, I forgot about that, that's correct. Since the way the charter's written now, it requires, assuming everybody's present, okay, that it would require four votes anyway, and the mayor voting simply adds another person to that mix to provide for that fourth vote.
But that's, I know that the attorneys have weighed in, that the way you're interpreting the charter now is that it requires four votes.
That's correct. Yeah, assuming, assuming, because the way it currently reads, the charter says, a majority of the county, of the city council, present and present, right? So, if only four people are present, then it would only require three. But if everybody's present, it does require four. Or if, yeah, that's correct, if everybody's present, it requires four. But the recommendation is they change that, so it's not a majority of those present, but a majority of the council.
But there are two or three different places in the charter now, that it talks specifically about the number of votes required to pass something.
Yes, sir, it does.
And I forget the others.
Yeah, there's several.
But it says three votes to pass those.
Yeah, that's right. There are some provisions where, which is, quite honestly, strengthens in my position the interpretation that is currently on the board, which is, there are places in the charter where it says very specifically, it only takes three of the members of council, which leads you to believe that the intent originally was that it would take four.
Okay. What was the other point here I wanted to make?
And again, I'm not for or against the changes.
Right, okay. So, right now, the, if we go back to the old interpretation, the three of five is a sixty percent threshold. And if we add the mayor, and then we require four, now we're moving to a sixty-seven percent threshold.
Statistically, that's absolutely correct.
So, are you aware of other councils, that that threshold is so, that high when it comes to passing?
No, I'm not.
And that's my concern. I mean, right now, everyone can look up here and say, well, everyone's pretty happy with each other, and we get along, and we should be able to find four votes. I'm not concerned about this council. What I'm concerned about is the council five years from now or ten years from now, and I've created something that is making their job difficult.
Sure. I don't disagree. I mean, these are all policy considerations that y'all should debate and determine as to whether or not you want it to go on the ballot.
So, that's my concern in that. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I wanna make more of a statement than a question, and I appreciate your input, because you've made it crystal clear, I think. But I think if we pull back from this dais, and we look at ourselves as voters instead of council people, I, as a voter, if I vote for a mayor, I wanna know how he feels. I wanna know how he votes on this, because then I can hold him accountable. As it stands, if something passes or fails, he could be, he could be on the dissenting side and get blamed for things that actually pass under his guard. As a voter, I wanna know where he stands, because if he's running again, then he'll have to answer that question.
That was part of the discussion as well, holding the mayor accountable for their position on issues that come before the vote.
Especially this guy.
Not this mayor in particular.
Wait, wait a minute, I gotta say something on that.
Please, please do.
The mayor, if, say he gets voted on something, he'll say, I'm gonna vote the same way. Votes for it, he'd say, I'd vote the same way.
I wanna give him as little wiggle room as possible.
There, you know, I'll be, you know, in my experience, and I've been doing this a long time, you talk to some mayors, and they're like, I want the right to vote. I want to take a stand on that position. I think it's important, I was voted at large, and I wanna, I wanna, I wanna be able to take that stand and represent the folks that put me in office. And other mayors are like, I don't wanna go anywhere near a vote. I just wanna be able to, you know, persuade people behind the scenes as to how they should vote, you know, and try to create, you know, consensus, as opposed to actually putting my vote on the record. So, it's, I see it both ways by different mayors, depending on their personal.
Like Mr. Mobley said, a lot of the citizens out there, they still, they think the mayor has a vote. I mean, they, when they find out they don't, they're surprised to find that out.
And I believe this, this is a much more transparent way to move forward. That's just my opinion.
Those are, again, all policy decisions and discussions that y'all need to determine amongst yourselves as to whether or not, you know, what I remind folks, and I reminded this charter commission of this all the time, and I think they got tired of hearing it, is that they weren't getting to decide whether this is actually gonna happen or not. Y'all aren't getting to decide whether or not this is actually gonna happen or not. Y'all get to decide whether or not it's important enough to go on the ballot for the citizens to make a decision as to whether or not it should happen or not.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we wanna entertain the mayor voting, then is it complicated to add with that another place up here?
No. It just, it just takes a little bit of math, and y'all tell me how you want it to occur. What it will do is that it, how long are your, I'm sorry, y'all, I can't remember what, how long are your terms? Three-year terms? So, some math will have to be done. I've been doing this long enough to know that probably one or two places will have to have a weird term, like a one-year term or something like that, somewhere down the road, in order to make sure we stagger it out. Unless you wanted, if you wanted staggered elections, so that you had, you know, two, I guess it would be two, two, and three, is how it would normally work, as opposed to a four and a three, because that's the other way to do it. You can have an election in one year where four people are up for election, you skip a year, and then you have another year where you've got three.
Or announce.
Right. No, I'm talking about if you added another council member. But if you wanted to stagger it so that it was two, two, and three, then there would have, we would have to make some, we would have, somebody would have to have a year term somewhere down the road, and, but I've done that on multiple occasions, where they have gone from five-member councils to seven-member councils, or six-member councils to seven-member councils, and three-year terms, and we added another council member, and we staggered it to make sure that eventually it all got on track. So, it's not difficult to do, just understand that that's, that will be the result. It'll take a while to get everybody on track, and somewhere down the road, someone will have to have one year or something like that.
Charlie? And the only reason I say that is that I would like to be somewhat consistent with the current way we've done things. And we've had a charter for thirty years that has been tie-proof. There's never gonna tie. So, to go from that to a system where virtually there could be a tie on everything we vote on, if you had a crazy council, and there will be a day when we have a crazy council, that we gotta be really, we gotta be really careful.
I understand, yes, sir.
With what we give them as options on a ballot. And it probably sounds like a really good idea to give the mayor a vote, yeah, but without, you know, explaining the ramifications of that from, how about efficiency, I'm guarded against that option, so.
You are correct with respect to your thought process, that with a six-member council requiring four votes, it will be more difficult to more, I say that, it's gonna depend, but it clearly requires a higher percentage statistically of folks to agree. Whether or not y'all can wrangle that or not, and whether or not that's something y'all wanna wrangle is up to you. But adding a seventh person, if you wanted to go that route, to give the mayor the right to vote as well, that can be done, and we can put that together for you. So, if you want, we can, I can put it together for a future meeting, so you can see what it would look like if y'all want. It's up to you.
Mayor?
Councilman Corgan?
I would, I would have to agree with Councilman Couch. I don't have a problem with the mayor voting. I think he's, like you said, is an elected position, he should be able to vote and state his opinion, but I do see there, foresee there being issues down the road with, as was stated, potentially a crazy council, and always having that issue of three and three, and nothing ever getting done, essentially. So, I would like to see something put together on how another council member would look as far as the rotation goes.
If I get direction for majority, y'all, I'll be happy to do that.
Let me add, let me add one more thing if you're done.
Yeah.
So, what discussion took place, because we're, everybody's at large, what discussion took place, if any, to deal with possible districts within the city? Because I know in the past, and it's gotten, it's gotten, I guess, more representative, but in the past, we had one area that basically represented the whole city. And it would be nice to see representation throughout. So, what if any discussion, and what was, what were the suggestions that came out of the group as far as dealing with that part?
My recollection is, it was a, it came up for discussion, it was a fairly short discussion, and it was essentially because the community is relatively small with respect to population size, probably too small for districts. And so, that was, there was a discussion about it, but I think ultimately, it was probably not the right time because of population size.
Okay. Thank you.
Am I, is that about, yeah, okay.
Charlie, I know there's some cities that, as they grow, they don't have every council member serving as a district, but they have maybe two or three of them in a district, and the rest of them are at-large. Is that true?
Or larger cities, City of Del Rio, I think Del Rio's thirty thousand or something like that, they've got this system where, I believe, two council, three council members are from districts, three council members are at-large, and then the mayor is at-large. So, they.
Charlie, there's several measures here that are defining, it takes four votes for this, and it takes four votes for that. And I'm concerned about twenty-one measures on the ballot. So, let me ask you this. If we were to have a measure where it lets the voters decide that they can vote to confirm the older interpretation, that three votes of the five council members wins the day with the mayor not voting, as it is now, or they can opt for adding a place and giving the mayor a vote, and then another measure that defines the voting council as five, wouldn't that eliminate a lot of these other measures?
No, it could make more. You'd have more measures, because we would have more propositions on the ballot than we're talking about now to accommodate those. And I'd like to alleviate, I may not alleviate your concerns, because I, your concern about the number of measures on the ballot is something I always hear, always. In my experience, and I'm going to assume that the City of Granbury is similar to most of the communities in Texas, that the citizens try to inform themselves, that they pay attention, that they try to do the right thing. I've had situations where there have been as many as forty measures on a ballot before. And the concern I always hear is, when we're going through the process and creating the number of measures and propositions, is that, well, they're gonna get tired, and they're just gonna vote no on everything, or they're not gonna read them, and they're gonna vote, they're just gonna vote yes on everything. That's not my experience. My experience is that they read them, they understand them, they take the time to figure them out, and I've had situations where, for example, there was twenty, I remember one specifically, there was, I think it was the City of Burnett, there were twenty-four measures on the ballot, and most of them passed pretty overwhelmingly, you know, but the number of no votes varied from maybe a hundred to two hundred based on it. And then there were three, there were three, one was a city secretary issue, one was whether or not the city attorney, I think, should live in the city limits, and one was something else. And two of them barely, just barely passed, just barely passed, just by a few votes, and the other one failed by just a few votes, maybe a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty votes. So, when I see that disparity in voting patterns, it, what it tells me is that folks really do pay attention, and I wouldn't be so concerned about the number of propositions that are gonna be on your ballot, because I have confidence that the citizens of Granbury are gonna take the time to figure out and vote what they think is appropriate. It's more important to make sure that you capture the changes that you wanna make at this point in time and get them before your voters. But doing what you would wanna do would, in my opinion, add more propositions to the ballot, not less, because we would have to have a new proposition for each, each one of those particular, and there's nothing wrong with it, if that's the direction you wanna go, but we would have to create measures and propositions for both of those, and they couldn't go on the ballot together, they would have to be voted on separately, and we'd probably put something in the ordinance that says that the one that gets the most votes passes, because it would be very possible that all three of them could pass, but just by different levels of numbers.
So, what you're saying, you wouldn't want to have on the ballot to give the mayor the right to vote, and also another proposition to add a council person, and they add the council person, passes, and the mayor voting doesn't pass, so then you just.
Well, we would, we would.
You've added a person who didn't need it.
Yeah, we don't wanna do it that way. We would, we definitely don't wanna do it that way, but we would package it in a way, because the way this, so the way this works, sorry, is if you've seen, I know that you've seen the package, you've asked intelligent questions about it.
Looking at it, yeah.
Is that, is that, first, we have a set of measures, and each measure may have, well, measure one has, you know, just, you know, lots of changes to your charter, because it's basically an administrative cleanup. We're getting rid of stuff that's not necessary, we're making some efficiency changes to make things clear, but we're not really changing the, we're not, we are not changing the substantive nature of your charter. There's a bunch of changes in that amendment, in that measure. So, measure one lines up with proposition A. So, if you approve proposition A, if the council, if the citizens approve proposition A, all the changes that were found in measure one will be made to the charter. So, we packaged that, that proposition into one measure, so that you don't, otherwise, we would have literally hundreds of propositions on your ballot. So, what I did is I, understanding the concern that everybody always has about the number of measures, I mean, the number of proposition on a ballot, I packaged those in a way that I believe complies with the law to get the smallest number. So, what we would do is if you wanted these various different types of changes, we would have to come up with language that makes those changes, package them in a single measure, and then put those on the ballot in different propositions. And again, we'd have to make clear that the highest number of votes getter, number of votes, the proposition with the highest number of votes would be the proposition that passes, because it is very possible that all three of them could pass, but just by different numbers. So, we have to make that clear in the ordinance. But it is possible to do, but I do believe that we'd add more propositions, not less. Some of the, and I don't have it memorized, y'all, I looked at them this afternoon, but I don't have it memorized, some of these where it says, you know, it takes four, was, was a, is a cleanup that they did, because in certain circumstances, like, for example, the city attorney can be terminated, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, sorry, great, the city attorney can be appointed and removed by a simple majority, three. But. But the city manager takes four. I think the city secretary takes four to appoint, or three to appoint, four, but so it was all over the board. And so the thought process from the, from the Charter Commission was, these appointees should be treated equally with respect to how, so that's part of why, okay, this is, this, so that way, even if the other one doesn't pass, we specifically know these folks require four. So that's why some of that is in there, and it'd have to, that would have to stay unless you chose that you didn't want to treat those folks equally and you pulled that off the ballot.
Okay. My other concern is, is, is again, the current voting requirements. Because basically, right now, it's an 80% threshold to pass anything. And I think that we need to fix that. You know, if we don't expand the, you know, the number of votes up here or a seat, we need to address that. And, you know, right now, it doesn't appear to be a problem, but it's going to be a problem if we, if we have that high threshold to, to function. So however, you would need to offer that up as an option to clarify that the, that the voting, the regular voting members are, are the five council members and a majority is three.
We, I could do that. If that's a direction, I could do that.
Because it just really gives too many, you know, too many few people too much power, I think.
The, I'm going to be critical here, but I'm not being critical of y'all, nor am I being critical of your community. I'm, I'm going to be critical of, I'm sure I'll make somebody mad, that's what I do every day, apparently, is that there's such, your charter, there's such a mix match of the way things are written in your charter. It's very problematic, and it makes for difficult interpretation issues. It's almost as if that we just cut and pasted certain things in the past and said, okay, that's how Joe does it, so we're going to do it this way, and let's put it on the ballot. And there was no attention paid to how things were worded, there's no consistency in how things are worded, and, and different words are used in different places, and, and so cleaning all that up was, was a challenge. And it was even more of a challenge in trying to accomplish what these folks said they wanted to bring to you for consideration. So I tell you that, yes, I can, I can come up with something that will do that. It's going to, it'll take me a little bit of time, I mean, not months, but, you know, to figure it and sort it through, but it can be, it can be done. I don't think I overstated anything.
We're all mad.
Diplomatically spoken, I hope.
We're all mad at you now.
But yes, we, we can, we can do something, if that's this council's pleasure, to put an option on the ballot that, that, making, making, you know, I'm going to say change, because I think you're, I think based on the language in the charter, it's clear what the vote count is required under that, the way, understanding how courts interpret charter languages, which is the plain language of the charter. But we can, I can do something, if that's your pleasure, so that that's an option. Yes, sir.
Would it be easier to draft a new charter with two or three options?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't think so. If, if, if y'all think that the mayor has, should be, well, I guess, let me say this. If you're concerned that, that, well, let's say you're concerned that it won't pass, that people don't want the mayor to have the right to vote, or you're, and then you'll be, I'm going to use the word stuck, because that's kind of what I'm hearing, stuck with your four out of, out of six requirements now without the mayor voting. It would be easier for me to create a ballot proposition that says if this doesn't, if, if this, if this, if, if the mayor not getting the vote doesn't pass, and this doesn't, this does pass, which, which would make clear the number of votes, three instead of four. Or if the mayor does vote and this making clear it's three that also passes, then it, then it's void, because I've already done that in here. So I can, it's easier for me to do that than to, than to do anything else. If you want to add a seventh council member, it's easy for me to do that, too. It's just adding, just doing the math on how that would transition into the future. I can do any of those things. It's all possible.
Counsel, any more discussion or questions or concerns? And like I say, this is a, this is, this is a, basically a discussion, but we will, and when we accept it, we don't accept it as is, we accept that we have heard the report from the charter review people.
Yeah, you can accept the, I defer to your city attorney, but I think you could accept the report without making any commitment.
Exactly.
Does someone want to make a motion? And a second for him to go back and.
Welcome, Larry.
Bring them back.
Okay, then I'd like.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and, and make a motion to direct Charlie and, and the Charter Review Committee to take into account the discussion up here and come back with revised options.
Can we be more specific?
Let's see, specifically on the mayor's vote.
Or on the number of votes.
The number of votes.
The number of votes necessary. So potentially, so potentially a situation whereby it remains the same, but it's three of five? Potentially a situation where we add a seventh council member, or no?
We add a seventh and allow the mayor to vote.
Okay, so those two.
That's my thought.
That's it, okay.
That's it. Do we have the motion?
And also, can we add?
Hang on, let's give a second first.
The prop D.
Let's give a second.
Can we add a second? I mean, can we add something?
Second. We have a second. By Councilman Morgan? Now, discussion?
I would like to add to that, or revise that, and add the removal of proposition D, which is in reference to the city secretary.
I'm good with that.
We're good with that one, too, with the motion, so we're going to add to the motion.
Do you want them to come back with a recommendation on that, or are you all just removing it?
Just removing.
I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Motion is to remove it.
Okay, all right.
Would we have to have two motions on that, Mayor?
Well, we've got a, he's changed his motion, so do you want to change, you okay with that on the second? And we're okay with it on the second, so we've got two items. We've got the mayor's vote and removal of the city secretaries. We have a motion and a second on both of those.
I do have one question, Mayor. What do we ever decide, and we don't have to decide tonight, I would think, but about Chris signing all the, we're saying it's okay to do, for Chris to do that, so.
Well, I think most of the council is.
So we don't have to worry about it now? You'll bring it back?
Yeah, the whole thing will come back.
The whole thing coming back.
No problem.
We're just making a motion for Charlie and the team to go back and bring something back to us on these two items.
Address, address, address.
The mayor's vote with the.
The mayor's vote with a seventh council member.
Exactly.
And also a potential proposition that creates a major, a vote of three out of five with the mayor not voting.
Right.
As a, as a, as a, as a possible option on the, on the charter, right?
And to remove the city secretaries.
Yeah. Okay.
I would like to call on Michael Ross. I would like for him to share a story that he has lived through related to the city charter in a city with the city secretary. Are you back there, Michael?
Was I involved in it, Michael?
He went home, he got a ward and went home.
We gotta wake him, wake him up.
Still have the motion and the, and the second, and this is part of discussion, guys.
He's still looking at his certificate.
He's still patting himself on the back.
He told me a story, and I think it behooves us all to listen to.
Michael.
Regardless of how you vote, I don't care.
Yeah, it goes back kind of to what you all landed on, is thinking about the person in the seat rather than the generic positions themselves. We picture utopia, we picture it's all wonderful now, for the most part, in, in the way we operate. It was that way when I took the city manager job at my city. City secretary had been there 14 years or so, everything was great. And then at some point, you had council members change, and it was set up like it is now, where the city secretary and the city manager both reported to the council, and a council member or two began to kind of use the city secretary in a way for the checks and balances that you described, in a way where it was almost undermining the city manager. In other words, we would have items on the agenda that the city secretary didn't agree with, and she would actually go to these council members and try to subvert the city manager's recommendations and discussions with council, and feed them different information, and try to sway council. And actually, it got to the point where she self-destructed at this city, and the council was forced to let her go. And they could not change that charter fast enough after going through the experience of having a rogue city secretary. You don't have anything close to that, obviously. Carla is wonderful. And, and you probably never will, but you're not, as you said, you're not doing charter changes based on who's in the seats today. These are, this is the constitution of the city. It's not, this is just experience. I was also at the city of Shurland when the change happened, where the city secretary came under the city manager. Same thing happened at the city of Pearland while I was there, and the full share charter that we just passed before I came here. Looked at all those different charters, Charlie reviewed that one for us as well, and they chose, as a modern, today's charter, to have that reporting structure, so that you don't have that confusion, you don't have, I mean, it's, it's like a corporation. You don't have the CEO of the corporation having this appendage or another individual over here that's equal or also reporting to the board of directors. You only have the CEO. And so that's, if you're, those, when you think about it in that way, it's just cleaner. The city secretary far preferred reporting to one individual.
Oh, yeah.
The next one than reporting to.
Six.
A city council. It wasn't, you don't have the politics, you don't have the nervousness. So those are just some experiences that Chris and I have talked about that we wanted to share. But that council, once they got some of that tar on them, they couldn't get rid of that position fast enough. And the same, some members on that same council had had these exact same discussions earlier years. I was there 15 years, so I got to see a lot of cycles happen. And so it was all good, it was, that was talked about on three of the charter changes that I was part of at that city. And each time, they go, no, it's fine, it's checks and balance, all these kind of phrases, but the last time, they couldn't wait to fix that. They fixed it immediately, as much as they could with a patch in the ordinance that just made an administration department. And I was over the administration department, and the city secretary was part of that department. So there was the day-to-day supervision, and then they fixed it in the charter later. Like everyone else, I'm not promoting one over the other, I'm just giving you some experience from another city. It's wonderful here, I'm glad to be here, and I'm not trying to change a thing, but it's, I wanted to share my experience.
I've got a question for Mike.
Oh, no.
Just one?
Go ahead, Mr. Trump.
I'll let you get the other one. Okay. I'm glad you shared that with us, but I still feel the same, but why didn't the council fire her or him?
Why?
Yeah, why didn't they? If they changed the charter as quick as they could, and they had the power to get rid of her or him, why didn't they do that?
Well, they did. They fired her.
Then.
And then they changed the charter so that they never had to go through that ever again, because they didn't want to have to be a day-to-day supervisor, an absentee supervisor, which is what council members are in the council-manager form of government.
Yeah.
You're not a mayor-council form of government, where you have, you know, the mayor's the chief executive, and he's running the city, and you have supervision of these different positions. These are city, these are designed to be, council members are elected, and then they're, really, the power you have is when you come together here and vote, and pass budgets and all those sort of things. It's not on a day-to-day basis, as you know, supervising personnel, that's not what council members are necessarily, that's not their, their normal position in what they do. And so you want one individual, I, you know, the people that believe in the council-manager form of government believe you want one individual that's answering to you, and not more than one.
This has been brought up before, and I'm still against it, because, you know, she's the only employee we got, other than the, the county judge, or, um, city, city judge, I guess, that, and Chris.
Chris.
And Jeremy.
And Jeremy. He don't count. But what I'm saying is.
Again, I have no preference whatsoever.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, we can't talk to anybody. And there is times that I feel real confident of talking, even when Dee was here. Dee had been here many, many years before I ever got on council. And I'd go to her and talk to her about things that happened in the city and stuff, and feel real comfortable with her. And I'm not knocking the city manager we had at the time I got on, but he's no longer with us. We got a great city manager. It's not that I don't trust Chris, it's like I don't, you know, I'm saying I, I love, I love our mayor. I want to keep him here, but.
And not, again, not promoting either way, but that city council at that city left that communication and working relationship in the charter, that that still existed. But on a day-to-day basis, they said the city manager should supervise.
Yeah.
Because he's here, he should supervise personnel, but that relationship stayed intact in the charter, and how that communication worked, and what the city secretary did for the council on a day-to-day basis, all of those things still had to occur and could occur. But when it came time to evaluations, of course, the city manager, I would go to the city council and say, how's, how do y'all think this is going? She has a lot of communication with y'all, she supports you on a daily basis, and as long as they were happy in general, and I was happy with the day-to-day performance and all the other aspects, life was great. And it was great up until the time I left, that was another eight years. So that's, that's just something to think about. You can still structure things if you chose to, but I'm not promoting one over the other. We're perfectly happy.
You'll be here for 60 years, I won't be here anyway.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you, Michael. Counsel, and you've got, you've got the motion, and you've got the second here, and this has been discussion. I will say that during this discussion, if you go ahead with the motion you've got, when they bring it back to us and you've thought it through and you think you want to change that again, you can do that. So, with that said, any more discussion? I'm going to take a record vote here. Councilman Corgan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, that's passed, and we'll look forward to your next report, Charlie. Thank you.
I want to thank y'all very much, and also, just real quickly, I should have said it earlier, the folks that y'all appointed to this commission just did a tremendous job. Everybody showed up, ready to work, prepared to work, read the materials, had questions, had spirited the debate, and it, they've just been a real pleasure to work with, so thank you.
Good to hear, thank you. Our next deliberation agenda item is to consider adopting ordinance number 1842, creating and establishing a Granbury Cultural Arts Commission. And I'm going to call upon friend Dominique to give the presentation, I believe. When we have Heather helping, or Heather Cleveland helping out, right?
Good evening, Mayor Hewlett, gentlemen of the council. For the record, my name is Dominique Inge, and I'm appearing before you this evening in my capacity as an active board member with the Granbury Arts Alliance, and will be making a presentation to you about this proposed ordinance. Before beginning my presentation, we would like to offer our sincerest apologies for not appearing at the last council meeting, June the 5th. It was a miscommunication, an honest mistake on both sides, and really appreciate your consideration. You must have been bewildered about why we were not here. We were bewildered also, but we thank you for your consideration and your latitude for not calling us out as complete deadbeats and no-shows and non-performers, because I don't think we are. I don't think we are. This will be a brief presentation to tell you a little bit about the Granberry Arts Alliance and what we are proposing to do, so we hope to inform you, to inspire you, and to engage you in what we are doing. Granberry Arts Alliance, acronym GAA. What is it? Who are we? What role do we play in the arts and cultural life of Granberry? The Granberry Arts Alliance began its life with a group of citizens a few years ago, as a discussion, actually, among these citizens, where we began to realize the potential of Granberry as an arts destination location. Please remember that phrase, "an arts destination location." And we wanted to work toward making that happen, so we thought that by forming an entity that could embrace all of the arts, all of the cultural events in the city, that this would be a way of making that happen. So, in 2012, we applied for and received an IRS nonprofit status, our 501(c)(3) status, which now makes any contributions to our organization tax deductible. We were successful in gaining some modest contributions initially, and we formed a board of volunteer directors who committed themselves to GAA's mission, which is to foster community prosperity through sustaining the arts and a vibrant community lifestyle. Short version of that is promoting the arts to sustain the arts. Our board is comprised of nine members currently, all of them with varied skillsets, and they represent professions ranging from actors and musicians to former museum professionals to gallery owners, writers, art patrons, and of course, artists, representing painters, sculptors, printmakers, photographers, storytellers, glassmakers. We are an interesting and lively, diverse group of folks. Our board meetings not only are productive, they are fun. And I can tell you, despite the occasional reputation of artists and creative people, there are no prima donnas on our board. Since its inception, GAA has been recipient of gifts from individuals and organizations, as well as support from a local foundation. In turn, GAA has used these funds to fund awards and prizes for local juried art exhibitions featuring hometown artists. We want to promote the local artists, of course. We've raised funds and underwritten costs for local art and fine crafts festivals, such as the recurring and ever-popular Harvest Moon Festival of the Arts. GAA has promoted and participated in the monthly Last Saturday Gallery Night and Art Walk, when visitors can enjoy art, refreshments, live musical entertainment at Granberry's galleries and shops that stay open late till 8:00 p.m. Also, the Last Saturday, and that's the Last Saturday of each month, there's also the Girls' Night Out on the Second Saturday of each month with similar activities. Both of these activities are marketed by visited Granberry and by individual participating galleries, shops, and restaurants. What we've just described is who and what GAA is, and a sampling of where we've been and what we've done. But I'd like to turn now to where we're going and our anticipated goals. Our priority short-term goal is to spearhead advocacy for approval of a city ordinance to establish a Granberry Cultural Arts Commission, acronym GCAC, that would be comprised of a group of commissioners appointed by the city council to serve in an advisory capacity. These commissioners would develop programs to expand all the arts and culture in the Granberry community and its environs, and to develop and implement a public arts and culture policy and master plan. That is our midterm goal, to spearhead development of a public arts and culture policy and master plan for the city, for the purpose of implementing a system for a public call for artists in order to acquire art, determine the sighting of art, and maintain public art permanently throughout Granberry and environs. Our long-term goal, to obtain a state cultural district designation conferred by the Texas Commission on the Arts. I'd like to emphasize that this designation is not, repeat, it is not a taxing district. This is a nominal honorary designation, which serves to recognize varying arts and cultural amenities existing in a defined geographical zone within the city and the environs. This requires a very lengthy application process, which is comprised of completing an inventory of all cultural, educational, financial, retail, and arts-related amenities and activities. My colleague Heather Cleveland and Scott Young have been very active in working on this application, and they can tell you the in-depth questions that are asked to make In addition to the associated honor once conferred, this designation would entitle the city of Granberry and GAA to apply for and receive substantial state grants. To have a cultural and arts commission in place is actually the necessary first step toward achieving a state cultural district designation. To date, GAA has, at its own expense, hired an attorney to draft the proposed city ordinance to establish a Granberry Cultural and Arts Commission for review by the city attorney for subsequent review and approval by Granberry City Council. GAA has also, at its own legal expense, begun drafting a public arts policy and master plan to be proposed for eventual adoption by GCAC. We have also hired a seasoned art consultant, Margaret Schalfen, whose solid experience has been immeasurably valuable. GAA has also benefited from the pro bono services of Don Anderson, who guided us through multiple strategic planning sessions. We are grateful for his generosity and commitment to helping GAA recognize its strengths and how GAA can further the art and cultural life of Granberry. As you've heard, we've been already very busy behind the scenes, serving and promoting the arts. But you might be asking, "Well, what is public art, anyway? Why is all this important? What are the potential benefits?" Public art is exactly that. It's art in public places. It can be bronze statues, murals, landscape architecture installations. Public art can take a wide range of forms, sizes, and media. Public art can even include performances and festivals. The possibilities for public art are limitless. Public art often is site-specific, so that it might interpret the history of a place or community, it might address a specific social or environmental issue. Public art is free and accessible to everyone. I might add that we already have examples of public art in the city, very wonderful examples. The most recent one in Lambert Branch Park, where a chainsaw artist has fashioned wonderful designs on what we believe is an old con tree stump. And if you go to Lambert Branch Park, you will see his carvings. And there are rabbits, there's a bumblebee, there's a fish, there's a deer, and he's done a beautiful job of carving on this tree, so that what was once an unsightly stump is now something very interesting that will be an educational opportunity for children and will inform them also about nature. So, part of our purpose is to collaborate with all of the different groups, not to compete with them. They would be totally autonomous in directing their own groups, but we would like to work with everyone in a collaborative way. Other examples of existing public art, you've all seen the wonderful statues, the bronze statues at the Langdon Center by Art Blevins called bifocal buddies, so public art can be humorous as well. There is also, at the northeast corner of the square, the Art Blevins statue of Mary Lou Watkins, and the wonderful statues in Memorial Lane, his statue of the Fireman's Memorial. And there are new installations there done by sculptor Mike Scoville called Homage to a Compatriot, showing a fallen warrior with a war dog in homage to the fallen soldier. These are all very meaningful sculptures to individuals, and this is the kind of thing that we would like to see expanded throughout the city. So, why is all of this important? The arts enhance the quality of life of any community, the arts attract tourists, and tourists visit art museums and exhibits, they attend concerts, theater and dance performances, they attend festivals and fairs, they lodge overnight and dine in restaurants. The arts perform by fueling the economy. Let's look at how the arts can fuel our economy and talk about a hypothetical weekend in Granberry for two couples. Two sold-out shows at each of two live theaters here, the Opera House. The couple would spend at the prime orchestra seats a hundred dollars, one couple would. Another couple might attend Granberry Live, VIP seats there for the couple would be seventy dollars. Over a thousand patrons would be brought to the area that might not otherwise have been there with these two sold-out shows at two theaters. The couples arrive early to shop the stores. One of them buys a handbag for forty-five dollars, a pair of shoes for fifty dollars, some bling they can't live without for twenty-five dollars. At a gallery, they see some art they want to think about before buying. Before the theater show, they meet friends for happy hour, enjoy a dinner at a restaurant with a bottle of wine, a hundred eighty-eight dollars. Instead of driving back home, they stay overnight at a B&amp;B, two King packages at two-hundred-ninety-two dollars and fifty cents a couple, times two, five-hundred-eighty-five dollars. Next morning, they return to the gallery where they saw the art the night before, because they couldn't stop thinking about it, and they buy the art, five hundred dollars. On the way home, they stop to purchase a full tank of gas, forty-three dollars. All these activities fuel the local economy, a total one-thousand-six-hundred-six dollars plus tax for the city of a hundred thirty-three dollars, seventeen-hundred-thirty-nine dollars. In closing, perhaps you can understand that we have been very busy behind the scenes, but it's time for us to bring awareness to GAA and to our goals for Granberry and the arts. All the elements are here in Granberry to make Granberry an arts destination location. People do not have to go to Fort Worth, to Dallas, to New York, Chicago, or Los Angeles to buy good art or to see quality performances. We have it all right here. What we need is a tipping point to make this happen. And gentlemen of the council, I would encourage you for an affirmative vote for this ordinance to create this commission, because I think this would be the tipping point for a wonderful arts destination location for Granberry. Thank you.
Dominique, you might want to stay up there for a little while there. I think council might have some questions for you.
You're not done.
But, yeah, you're not done. First of all, where'd you find that tank of gas at for forty-three dollars? I want to go there.
That's what it calls to fill my car.
A little more.
How much bling do you have?
No bling, unfortunately, but a few real things.
On the nine members, I know a lot of ours have requirements that they live in the city. Have they discussed that? Would they have to live in the city to be on this board, or could they be from the county, all over? What would that be, look like?
I believe that would be defined in the ordinance.
Defined, okay.
Yes, it would be defined in the ordinance. And we would envision that these individuals would make public application, just as they do for all of the commissions here, so they could go online, get an application form. And other methods would be, of course, recommendations from groups or individuals.
I was mistaken, it's seven members. The nine was yours, okay. Okay. Council, any more questions for Ms. Inge?
I've got one.
Mr. Allen?
For you, Dominique, or if it's for the mayor, might remember, too. I thought we had an art district already set up for Granberry. Don't we, or not?
No, we do not have an arts district, a cultural arts district, not currently.
Okay. I remember six, seven years ago, we did something.
It's a historical...
For art?
Culinary.
Yeah, it's something with art, but I can't remember what it was. We might check into it.
Was it a culinary arts district or something like that that we had?
I can't remember.
It's not in our code, it was not adopted by ordinance.
Oh, it's not?
No.
We probably just buggered on it. The city manager...
Council, any more questions? Thank you, Dominique.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance... Or said res... I'm sorry. The said ordinance.
Will sit.
And we have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by a group of people down there. Mr. Corrigan? Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the adopting the ordinance. Any more discussion, council?
Here.
Councilman Couch?
Yes, I'd just like to express my gratitude to the people that have come together to form this organization. It's been a missing component to our lovely square and our community, and it's going to work nicely. And I know that's a lot of work to put together, and I want you to know how much I appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
I would just like to say, for anyone out there that's potentially looking to bring something to council, this was amazing. Not only was it well put together, but if you have that much support...
It's going to work.
I mean, it's just, it's a no-brainer. You know, there's a lot of things that have been brought to this council well before I was here that were kind of fifty-fifty, and it really took some convincing to maybe go one way or the other, but this was very well put together. You guys did a great job, and just to have that much support behind you is phenomenal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
I think what Mr. Corrigan's saying is, with this much support, he didn't want you to follow into his car.
I'll throw in that motion. And I'll echo that. And thanks for all the letters, and the council received many letters of support, and I'm sure we read through those, and we really appreciate that also, to help us make our decisions up. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, thank you very much. Look forward to working with you. Our next item is a, it's actually a first reading of an ordinance granting Tri-County Electric Incorporated as the power franchise to use the public right-of-way. I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that.
You bet. As you know, we have franchise agreements with our folks that use our right-of-ways, and this is needing to be renewed. This one's been expired for a while, but we've worked with Tri-County, staff has worked with Tri-County, to facilitate getting a franchise agreement in place where we have good understanding of how we're going to operate together in this... of how we're going to operate together in this environment and our right-of-ways. So, we've put together this ordinance. This is the first reading, and if you like, I'll read that quotation that's required, and we can move on there.
Go ahead, Ms. Inge.
An ordinance granting to Tri-County Electric Cooperative, Inc., its successors and assigns an electric power franchise to use the present and future streets, alleys, highways, public utility easements, public ways, and other public property, public right-of-ways of Granbury, Texas, providing for the repeal of all prior franchise ordinances to Tri-County Electric Cooperative, Inc. Its predecessors and assigns, providing for compensation, therefore providing for an effective date, and a term of said franchise, providing for written acceptance of this franchise, and finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public. So, that's the first reading.
There you have it, council, the first reading. And that's really all the action that is taken on this one, so. Any questions on that? We'll have a second reading.
Next.
Okay.
We've got to publish it.
We will move on to item number eleven, which is considered approving an agreement between Honeywell International Corporation. I'm going to call upon Chris to give us a staff report on that one.
Thank you, mayor. As you all may be familiar, I'm trying to get my little laptop to work right here. There it goes. We've entered into an agreement with Honeywell to do a study and to come back with a proposal. At this time, we have Mr. Joseph Smith, I mean, Joseph Price here to visit with us about the outcome of that study, and we've got a contract from Honeywell to consider tonight. So, Joe?
Joe Davis.
Joe Davis, sorry.
Joe Davis. He's killing somebody.
What did I call him?
James Smith.
Smith? Price?
Pardon me?
I was trying to figure out what I called you.
I knew who you were talking about.
Well, we'll let you talk about the progress here.
Introduce yourself, and we all know you then.
Yes. Mayor, council. Chris, thank you very much for this opportunity today. I brought with me. Where are they? Kenneth Drew, Kenneth Drew here is in the blue coat, is my boss. Any stuff about how good I am would help. And if you'll remember, Stephen Nelson is the lighting contractor that I brought with me here if there was any lighting questions. And if you'll remember, I've got a short PowerPoint to show y'all, and Kenneth Drew and I will go through that with you. I don't know how you change the. I'm going to click through. This is the meeting agenda that goes through. I'll have to apologize to you because my eyes are not able to see what I'm doing, so Kenneth is going to talk too.
Cool, thank you. So, what we did is, when we look into one of these infrastructure renewal projects, what we look at is, we look at the, thank you. Why did he have to lower it? So, what we look at is, we take it as if we live in the city, and we say, okay, there's some things that have to be done to bring the city up to the standards that you want it. But there's always ways to finance it and work it so that actually, over time, there's, you're not really outlaying cash, and sometimes you get a little bit more positive. So, we first started with a side audit, and then we brought in some engineers. We did a preliminary engineering assessment on it. What we looked at is, we looked at controls and HVAC and lighting. Stephen here with the lighting company, that when you change some of the lighting, you really save the most money. Do you want to talk about your upgrades? Okay. So, what we did is, we looked through, I think there was about twenty buildings. We looked at upgrading most of the lighting to LEDs, and both interior and exterior. We looked at the building lights, the street lights, the sidewalk lights, and most of the saving comes because when, as everybody knows, you know, we do it in our houses now, is you go from wattage to a different LED, and the power that you save from going to the lower is what the city comes in and saves. So, after the preliminary audit. Man, that is small. So, after the preliminary audit, what we did is, we bring our engineers, we take a design build, we put the buildings all together, and then we calculate all the savings. So, what we looked at is, there's, we need to change the eighty-ton chiller because it's a little bit older. We've got seventeen IPLVs that'll be grayer. We've got rooftops, and we're changing some of the refrigerant lines. Now, you were lucky because some of the refrigerant lines were really good here, but in a couple buildings, they were pretty old and need to be replaced. We're going to replace eight rooftop units. I think one of the questions by the third-party auditor, which was very good, and it's a smart thing to do, was what was the SEER value of the rooftop units we're going to put in? And those are fifteen-point-six. So, I think he was recommending fifteen, so we're a little bit over what he was recommending. We do have, we talked about the refrigerant lines. So, up there, it says eleven-point-six or greater. That's what I meant for the fifteen-point-six is what it is. We did new network thermostats, because then you can set it and control it, and you get some energy savings from there. We did look, one of the questions that the third-party engineer talked about is looking at the DSVs, and we looked at it, but, and it's feasible to put them in, but there was no energy savings from them. And so, what we tried to do is look at what will save the most energy over time and what you really needed. So, we found that early on, that that wasn't really energy efficient. The only thing that you're going to have to look at from a construction standpoint is, we do need a crane. We'll have to have a trailer to put some of the, you know, the items on here for you, but that's really the only thing in the area that we'll need. We are going to put in a control system for two buildings.
Let me, can I interrupt a minute? One thing that is, is the crane. When we change the chiller out, in other words, we're going to do it start Friday afternoon after we close. We're going to put temporary cooling in the IT room and in the police department because they don't close. So, and then we are going to put that chiller and all the air conditioning units on a trailer for the city to take. In other words, we're not taking the, all those big air conditioners out because the city wanted those, and so they're going to have a trailer there, and our crane's going to put that on their trailer for them to haul off.
To sell at auction.
Yes.
Yes.
So, some of the, okay, thank you. So, on the controls of a couple buildings, what we looked at is, it'll allow for direct digital controls and installations throughout the building. It'll handle some of the maintenance on the building in City Hall and the Conference Center. And what you're going to find is, the controls are going to allow you to get a lot of the energy savings because it's going to change whether the people are in there after hours, and allows you to really control the environment to really increase your savings.
Yeah, and on top of that, we're using the, which was Chris's idea, which I thought was excellent, is that we're putting these controls on, in y'all's server here in City Hall, and then your facilities people can go on the computer and see any problems. It will warn them on their phone, there's a problem, and they can go on their phone and look and see what the problem is to where, when they want to fix it, they know what material to take to get it fixed, or a problem to do it, and it'll warn them about changing filters on the air conditioning and everything.
Yeah, you really see a lot of, today's, you know, in the buildings, the controls is really one of the things that gives you most of the energy readings. And in the EBI controller, there's so many parameters and reports that you can run, and then you can actually dial in, and over time, our technicians come out, we dial it in. So, it's just perfectly efficient and the best it can be. And then you can also, as the city grows, right, it puts more buildings, it's easy to add those buildings on to those controllers over time. So, the executive summary, wow. Yeah, that's real small. So, let me remember what it is. We looked at, we looked at a couple of things. We looked at direct energy savings, and then we also looked at operational savings. And you can have both of them. And what we found was, the original contract is going to be one-million-seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And the savings that are going to come each year is two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-four-hundred dollars in lower energy costs. So, the payback is about eight, eight-and-a-half years. And so, what that does is, you're able to finance, that takes into account the amount of the install, and takes into account the financial charges over there, and then so in eight-and-a-half years, you pay for it. Now, your units that you put in, the chillers, the rooftop units, they last a lot longer. I mean, they're fifteen, twenty-year things. So, what you'll see is, the savings continue to go for much longer than what the term to payback is.
One of the things that we did when we went here and looked at this is, I was focused on and directed our project manager and engineer to look at every unit, even in your outbuildings. And that is, is to look at their condition and how long they were expected to last, because they were the age that they were running close to in the life thing. So, they came, and what they came back is, is the engineer came back and said, in the next three years, you will replace every one of these air conditioners anyway. So, what we did is, is brought all those units in, all twenty-six of them in to replace, and at today's dollars. So, and that's what we have. I know that last, at the last deal, we only came up with, we came up with two-hundred-thousand dollars every year savings. This time, it's two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars and four-hundred dollars savings every year, which is paying for this project. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you, Joe. Council, you have any questions for this team? Mr. Kaufman has a question.
Oh, yeah, you know the one. Go ahead, I'll go last. I just got something I don't understand, and maybe it's just me. No comments. You've got three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand cost. O and M is twelve-hundred. You see that?
Three sixty-three cost?
Yes.
And then you come on down to twenty-thousand on controllers upgrade, and your O and M's five-thousand. Why is it higher?
Why is it higher on?
O and M.
The O and M on the controls? Because what we have on the controls is, oh, sorry. So, normally what you have is, the controls actually reduces the amount of manpower that you take to go in ahead and doing some of the efficiencies. So, it automates it all, and so you'll have a higher operational maintenance savings on it than you will on some other things. It's mainly because of automation. That's a good question.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So, the last presentation, wasn't the return on investment, was it what estimated to be a shorter period? And now we're at eight-and-a-half years?
Yes, the last one was reported to be that it was going to come in at between six and seven year. That was looking at only a few of the air conditioners. But look at all we've added, Councilman Mobley. We've added all your outbuildings and changing out those air conditioners, and that's the reason that, but the savings went up too.
Okay, well, don't get personal here, but.
Okay.
So, I still like the number, because you're saying there's a twenty-year life here, and we're still getting eight-and-a-half years. We're making, basically, we're, we've gotten our money back at eight-and-a-half years. If you look at the twenty-six units that we're replacing, and you said, within the next three years, we're going to have to do that anyway, whether we do this or not, we're still going to have to do that, what would you estimate would be the cost of replacing those twenty-six units?
Well, that would be hard for me to say.
Just ballparking, I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for a hard quote.
It's right here. One-point-zero-seven-mill.
Zero-five-one.
Well, you add twenty for the controls as well. One-point-zero-seven-one-four-four-one.
So, effectively, we're going to have to do that anyway over the next three years. Knowing that going forward, I mean, the effective return on investment would probably be much quicker, because we've got to face that expense, that capital outlay going forward anyway. So, to put it in perspective, it really shortens that timeframe down, because that's a monster we can't avoid going forward. Would you agree?
Yeah, and that's what the beauty of doing these are, is that you're going to have that cost later, and instead of having the cost, you pay for it.
That microphone scares you, doesn't it?
It does. I'm like, whoa. I don't like being a face, but yeah, you're right. I mean, you're exactly right. This is, this method is just, I mean, it's fun to do, and it's fun to present, because it does, it saves you from that capital outlay later on, it gets your facilities up, and then, that's why you have some O and M on there, because the payback is just amazing.
It is. I mean, one thing is, is, and I have been doing this long, twenty-one years, but there's two things that happen in this, and I've done a lot of cities, all the way from North Texas to the border in Mexico. And this is the best job I've ever seen, as far as the payback and what's going to happen. I saw it. And the other thing is, this is the best city as far as y'all service people and everything. They are one, smart people, and y'all've got a good group, helpful. Rick is wonderful.
Okay, Joe, okay, okay, Joe.
And I'm telling you.
Don't forgive me. He's not up for a raise, is he?
No. I clapped real hard when Michael got up here. So, I mean, I'm telling you, this is, I've enjoyed every minute of this. It has nothing to do that I live here.
Where do you live at, sir?
I live at sixteen-oh-one Harbor Lakes Drive, Granbury, Texas. Wonderful.
You're not afraid of that microphone, are you?
Not in all of reality.
I think Chris has something he wants to add to this.
So, go back to the engineering audit that we got on Monday. Can you address some of those things that he mentioned in there to verify? I think you mentioned one of them about the SEER value. I was concerned about that as well, and so if you're looking at fifteen-point-six, is that what you're doing just at the Conference Center, or are you talking about the split units also?
All of them.
All of them, a minimum of fifteen-point-six?
Yep.
Okay. So, that's good. And then, just so the council knows, that report showed that this savings on electric cost was based on twelve-cent electricity, and our electricity is about one-point-two cents less than that. So, that's a little bit inflated, but it's still a big savings that we're experiencing. But, you know, it's, instead of a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars in electric cost, it's probably closer to a hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand every year, so it's not that big a difference. But I want to be as transparent as possible while we're at the dice, making this decision. So, you know, it's probably eight-and-a-half to nine-year payout instead of this netted out here, it's a little bit less than that. So, this is a comprehensive approach on how to address these capital improvement needs that are going to be looming in front of us. The only downside I see to it is, in about twenty years, you're going to have to turn around and do it again, because all this equipment will be worn out at the same time, so.
But we faced that with almost everything we did.
Yes, right now, they're kind of staggered, and, you know, as you know, I've been here, this is my, three years, and my fourth budget, and been worried about that chiller going out in the City Hall every minute of every day. And so, I was looking at the sheet, your report there shows where all these air conditioners are going, and it's pretty comprehensive, and we're looking forward to getting this done if y'all approve it. But I would like to say that the team that came in. But I would like to say that the, the team that came in, worked with our staff, they did a great job. I'm sold on, on this team and the performance they put together for us.
Counsel, any more, uh, questions or concerns for these, these folks or Chris?
He's asking.
You got one, Mr. Allen?
I'm gonna ask Chris if he would, uh, explain to us on financing, Alan.
Okay, so they, they presented a possible option. Uh, staff would like to, uh, investigate all options on lease purchasing and, uh, and see if we can get a different interest rate or a better interest rate than what's been presented, uh, to this, in this presentation. Um, they, they don't have anything to do with that part of it. They, I'm sure they'll be happy to receive a check from any financing company we lease purchase through, so, um...
I'm not scared of the speaker when you say that.
Yeah, so, so we are looking at, at, um, trying to determine the best option to do that and get the lowest interest rate, which may change the overall cost of the project as we make our payments. Now, back to the budget.
We talked about that.
We're gonna need to, we're gonna need to adjust for these payments in the lease purchase. And it was pointed out, we've got some lease purchases rolling off where we, we're no longer lease purchasing small vehicles. And, uh, so we'll have some of that cash flow to work with. But these are immediate needs and, uh, the light savings. So we're gonna have a sidebar with the light engineer and when we spec those, we're gonna give them the color that we want them. And, uh, so there won't be, uh, a big change from, from our soft warm glow. And we want them to all be consistent, you know, in the same building, it'll be the same light. Throughout the system where we can use the same light bulb in one building to the next and provide some consistency there. So we've gotta work out those details before we can actually, um, allow this to happen. I do have a concern over the, the, the brand of the carrier because our, um, our staff does not like carrier because of the, the issues they're experiencing with those, that equipment. And, um, we need to work through that and I don't know if that's too late in this game or not, but...
No, it's not.
We're not, we're not sold on carrier is what I heard after I met with you.
Well, they, you're not sold on train either.
Right. The proprietary nature of, of train is a problem. The, the pulley issue that they're, uh, the failure of the pulley system on the carrier is what's got their, their concern now. So we need to, we need to finalize that. And I guess y'all put this out for bid? Is that how you do this or how do you?
Yes, we already have.
Okay.
We put it out for bid and it's not locked into a specific train carrier, any of them, so...
Okay.
And it's, train's a little higher, so they, but the others, we can move whichever one y'all want.
We'll work with you on that.
Okay.
So the, the color of the lighting and the consistency of it throughout, I know we're replacing park lights and, um, can you talk to us about that? I know this spreadsheet's a little bitty for the council bill read, but we can expand it on our iPad. But we're talking about, uh, parking lots, we're talking, parking lot lights, uh, we're talking about, uh, the lighting along the, the side of the walking trail in the parks. Uh, we're talking about, uh, uh, lights in this room here, I'm sure, and I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, these lights are included in it and there's various color temperatures here and it, it can be adjusted based on what you direct us to do. That shouldn't, that won't affect the pricing.
Fire station, uh, there's two lights out at the, at the fire station. I said, "Don't replace those, they're in our package when we get to it. Save me that money." So anyway, um, so there's some light bulbs that need to be replaced, or light fixtures out there need to be replaced that we're holding off on intentionally if you see those out, but, um, so there's, it's pretty comprehensive. It wasn't 2,200 lights or something? I can't remember the exact number.
Yeah, it's close to 2,300 lights.
So it's pretty extensive with lighting refit. Now, we chose not to address the ballfield lights, uh, because of the return on investment is too long. Uh, they're not burned enough to, to gain enough savings to justify changing those out at this time. So we did not do the ballfield lighting, the soccer field and baseball lighting.
Mr. Davis will keep them in, him a tour in his garage, so when he wants it, he'll bring it.
I don't think he's got them yet. They're still trying to make them. Can't make them fast enough, can they?
No, sir.
That's all I have, boss.
Thank you. Counsel, any more questions, concerns? Mr. Davis, thank you for your report. It's, uh...
Thank you.
Counsel, no more, uh, discussion on this. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between Honeywell International Corporation with the said agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved. At this time, the city council will recess the regular council meeting and we will convene into a meeting of the Employee Benefit Trust. At this time, I will call to order, it's June 19th, we're here at City Hall, at 8:16, I will call to order the Granberry City Employee Benefits Trust meeting. Chris, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, to give us a staff report on considering of approving the city's employee health insurance contract, if you would please.
Thank you. Um, as y'all are aware, we provide health benefits to our employees and every year, we typically bid that out. Um, this year, our current company that we were currently with is United Healthcare and, uh, they proposed, um, about a 9% increase. While Blue Cross Blue Shield, which was our previous provider, which the employees were much happier with, provided a 1.03% proposal savings. So we're recommending that we go back, but, uh, before we jump on that, let me just tell you that our consultant at Higginbotham reached out to, to Blue Cross Blue Shield to try to get the very best deal we could from them. And they were able to, uh, come back at about 1 and 1/2% savings instead of the 1.03. So we've got a little bit more, translates to about a $12,000 savings. And, uh, so, so at this point, staff's recommending that we move our insurance, uh, to Blue Cross Blue Shield for the new premium that's laid out on the far right side of your screen. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Michael's here and I think Tracy is here or was here, so...
No.
Okay. If you have any questions, we'll...
Okay.
Try to answer them. Uh, it's the same insurance coverage that we had last year. It's, we hadn't changed any of the, the co-pay, we hadn't changed any of the self-insurance. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, but we, we, to keep our premium low, we reimburse the employee 2,500 of their 3,500 deductible when they have to meet that. And so that keeps our policy affordable, it keeps it attractive to our employees as a nice benefit. You can see it's a $3,500 individual or $7,000 family deductible. And then the out-of-pocket is 6,350 for the individual and 12,700 for the family. You know, we, we don't provide health benefits for the family. We do allow the individual employee to buy those benefits on their own at 100% of their cost. And, uh, so I think we have like two families that participate in that program. The rest are just, we're just providing insurance for employees.
Thank you, Chris. I, I wanna make one clarification. As we opened up the meeting, I wanna do, make for the record that, uh, Councilperson Reiner is not present for this meeting also. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns that you wanna address with Chris or Michael on the Employee Benefit Trust meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the city's employee health insurance contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilman Mobley, a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. If there is no further discussion, I will adjourn the City of Granberry Employee Benefits Trust meeting. At this time, I will declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session and all members except Councilperson Reiner are present. And the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code and in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551-087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development, Section 551-071, Consultation with the Attorney, Section 551-072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, Section 551-074, Personnel Matters. We will now go into executive session. The council has now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, do you have any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to make a motion that we approve a 3% raise for our municipal judge, Alan Hines, uh, beginning October 1st of this year, and we authorize this city manager and staff to move accordingly.
We have a motion for the raise for the judge? We have a second. Got some heads going.
Second.
Yes.
Second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any discussion on that item?
Did, did you say the first year or first fiscal?
October 1st.
October 1st.
Yeah, okay.
Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Counsel, is there any further discussion in the meeting? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.